Today is Wednesday. Let me make sure I get the right date. The 19th. No objection, it must be. Time is 10:02. Meeting of the Montague County Commissioners called to order. I would ask you to please stand for a moment of silent meditation, making standing for the pledge. Thank you.
Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to insert a little thing here in our agenda. We're fortunate to have Coach Maisy here with us today. West Virginia University's baseball coach. Do we have any players, Coach?
They're all studio.
Yeah, they got to work before they can play. If you would, just come up here, Coach.
Sure.
I'd just sort of like to read this into the record. Certificate appreciation in recognition of the outstanding leadership of WVU baseball, Coach Randy Maisy and the WVU men's baseball team for their community service rendered to the residents of the state of Oklahoma who were devastated by a horrific tornado and to the residents of the state of West Virginia for their assistance during the water crisis. All of you are to be commended for your compassion in helping others in need, showing the true spirit of teamwork and mount near pride. February 19, 2014. And we're going to sign this.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And also on behalf, as you had passed out for those who hadn't seen it, the West Virginia new baseball stadium that will also be in Montague County, the West Virginia 15 that we have.
I don't think it has any openings.
Coach, we appreciate you coming down. Appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
And one other thing that...
And you've got to remember now, you've still got 20 years to go before my grandson gets...
I haven't forgot, Lou.
We have, yeah. We have one other thing that they're going to surprise you with.
Yeah, we was, I think we're in consensus and agreement is that we want to support the baseball program, WVU, and we're all in agreement, we'd like to purchase season tickets.
And that's what we're going, yeah, so if that, this bounces, but...
I wish we could purchase it for the new stadium, but that's yet to come.
Yes.
But we want to demonstrate our support for your program, for you and the players, and if there's any way we can do more than that, we'd be more than happy to consider.
Well, I appreciate everything you all do, appreciate this gesture and coming to the games. My only rule is you can't yell at the coaches when you're...
The players are our...
Yeah, just don't yell at the coaches.
It's a good rule.
No, thank you guys so much for everything you do. It's nice to be a part of a community. It's been a long time since I've been in a program that the community means so much to the program and the program means so much to the community. So, we're here to help any way we can. If you need help anywhere, don't be afraid to pick up the phone and call them out in your baseball program. That's why we're here.
We thank you.
It's more than just hitting curveballs and fielding ground balls. It's community, so that's what we are and that's what we hope to continue.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Oh, you got a picture?
Yeah. Tom, you're always the one that's done getting the pictures.
I know, I know.
Get over here. Does that work?
Yeah.
Maybe shit. You OK?
Yeah. One more, please.
We're also hoping that the community will get behind the baseball team and buy the season tickets. The other thing I think people need to also realize is Coach Maisy has offered his help and services in the discussion of this new rec center that we're looking at, and he's already been involved with the baseball local teams. And I really think this partnership, and it has to do more than not just WVU and Montague County Commissioners, but it has to do with the type of community that Montague County is and the type of Coach Maisy is because what we were able to see, and if anyone has the chance, I strongly recommend you watch that film of Oklahoma because you'll be very proud to be a West Virginian, Montague County resident, and I believe you'll immediately go out and support the WVU baseball team. It was quite moving, and I thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll get you the tickets, but we will, I mean, we'll get you the, we'll get us the tickets.
Tom is a resident salesman here.
Yes.
So, he's selling season tickets.
See me for season tickets. I'll get them.
Well, I have, we've got three, we need a thousand more.
Well, I think there's a couple more people in here that I think we're going to push and get going, but we want to thank you again.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Diane.
Okay. Today for consent and approval, we do not have any exonerations.
Yay.
Pardonneur orders as of February 19, minutes of January 8. Vouchers for General County Fund, $196,947.8. Coal Severance Fund, $139.19. 911 Cash, $14,530.95. Mason Dixon Park, $53. Law Enforcement Forfeiture, $3,095. Magistrate Court Fund, $1,440. Assessors Valuation Fund, $1,007.19. A total of $2,876.92. And I have one budget revision that requires a motion and state approval. This is moving $170,000 from 01/9/88 to 7/11/459 for the payment of the 911 equipment that the Commission agreed to take care of.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Renata.
We have one request for reimbursement today. Evoque Grant for January 2013, $3,091.59.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I have one grant application for the Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety Homeland Security State Administrative Agency. We're requesting $7,988, and this is a project that is, we're working with the Health Department on for emergency preparedness for the elderly and disabled.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Got to sign two places here? There's one.
There's one more spot on the last page.
Okay, thank you. Tom Aiman, is he here?
Yes.
Tom?
Schedule at 10:15.
Huh?
The public hearing is actually at 10:15.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
We've got 10 minutes to kill.
Yeah.
Okay, Tom, we got 10 minutes.
We have to wait, yeah.
We got 10 minutes to kill, but if he wants to sit down, that's all right. We're just going to move ahead on the agenda if we can.
Carrie is here with a new employee for your approval.
Carrie is here with, Carrie?
Gentlemen, I would like to introduce to you Willa Beely, who we've hired as a full-time employee in the county clerk's office, and she started yesterday, it was her first day, so we are excited to bring her on board.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for approval, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Welcome. Mr. Aiman, is there anything that we have you down, oh, we have Steptone Cruz down here.
Do you want to put, do you want to have Brown discuss the, his items and then before the public hearing, if you want to go ahead and move forward with something?
Well, we only have three minutes.
Okay.
Is there any correspondence, Diane, that we can address?
I do have a requisition for payment of cost of issuance. This is in regards to the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District for the Ballpark, an amount of $5,000, and this will be paid with the bond proceeds.
That was Bull's Race Issuance Cost, the $5,000 for issuance, and they're asking for our approval to pay that $5,000. So, I'd move that we approve that payment.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for approval, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We've got a couple more minutes. Anything else?
I'm happy to announce the City of Westover accepted our agreement for the services, the animal control officers and humane officers within the district of Westover, and they have submitted a payment of $2,065.60 with the remainder coming between now and June 30 for the amount of the contract that we had with them.
Now, does that represent one-twelfth or does that just represent?
It's, they're making up for the year.
For the months previous?
Yes.
Because I didn't think that that would be, one-twelfth would be that much.
No.
So, they're paid through February now, I understand?
Yes.
From what I read on the...
And I've notified the job boards that they are now permitted to be in the City of Westover and do what they need to over there. So, I do have an agreement. Actually, this has your name on it because we...
We did it sometime ago.
If you would go ahead and sign that contract, I'll change that name.
You can't let him sign.
No, you're the big deal now.
Big deal. I need a higher chair. Okay, how about the abstract from DOH for Hartman River Bridge?
Also, this is good news that they've accepted the Hartman River Bridge into their highway system.
Yes.
That was the Commissioner's order, and they filed it as an abstract in the county clerk's office, so it's now official, no longer our bridge. It's in the state highway system.
Do I have a motion that we can all stand and jump up now?
I'll jump up, jump out of there. That was a stroke.
That's a significant accomplishment for transferring the ownership of that bridge, although we did clean it up some and paint it for the state. They may decide not to replace it, and if they do, we want our half a million dollars back.
We haven't given it to them yet.
Oh, I thought we did.
No. We've committed it.
We promised them, but we haven't sent it. The check's in the mail.
Check's in the mail.
We'll send it back when they get, when we get the signed agreement.
When we finally get the deed finished.
Okay, I would imagine that we move into a, to a public hearing that we're, all they need a microphone.
It's there.
It's where?
Right there in the corner, Janet.
Can you hear from that one?
You want to give them a little test, say, make sure they pick it up?
Testing? One, two, three.
Let's see, that was just $250 cost.
Two minutes.
It wasn't a professional sound. I would guess from protocol here, we should move from our meeting into a public hearing mode. And at this time, at 10:16, I would declare the public hearing open. First of all, we have several things to consider here. I don't know if we need to have a separate public hearing for each of these, or can we have a public hearing for all of them?
One public hearing.
Okay. So, you have a copy of the agenda, Tom?
I do.
A is to conduct a public hearing regarding a proposed ordinance relating to conveyance, leasing, and financing of Montague County Justice Center facility. Do we, should we take one of these at a time?
Sure.
Okay, let me, let me first, just for the record, say that we have a procedure for public hearings, and that procedure is that we will first allow people who speak in favor of the public hearing, then we will allow those persons who may be opposed to it, and then we will open the floor for a vote. So, Mr. Aiman, if you'll just explain a little bit about this.
Sure, this is the Stagger's Building project. The county, of course, has already acquired the building and has undertaken some remediation work and preparation work for the building to get it ready for renovation work to house various judicial facilities. The bond financing is to cover the cost of future renovations to the Justice Center building. The work has already been put out to bid. Sterling Associates, of course, is the architecture firm for the project. They put the project out to bid, and you've got bid results and approve the, you know, acknowledge the low bidder for the project, and so you know what the costs are from that low bidder. We have been moving forward with the financing ordinance procedure for both the Building Commission and the County Commission. For the County Commission, it's a, the ordinance process is a two-reading process with the public hearing. The Commission has already had first reading on the ordinance. The county's ordinance, of course, the structure would be that the Building Commission would be the issuer of the bonds. The Stagger's Building would be conveyed by the county, county now owns the building, be conveyed by the county to the Building Commission. The Building Commission would issue, issue the bonds on behalf of, in essence, the County There would be a lease agreement entered into between the county and the Building Commission where the Building Commission would lease the facility back to the county. The county makes lease rental payments under that lease, which pays the debt service on the bonds and all costs associated with the bonds. So, that is the mechanism by which the bonds are issued and repaid, and the Building Commission structure, as we discussed before, is utilized in order that the financing would not be considered a debt for state constitutional law purposes. So, it's an annual appropriation lease arrangement where the county has to budget every year for the lease payments that are needed to make the debt service on the bonds for that year, and the county is required to have the statutory right within at least 90 days prior to the end of each fiscal year of the city to cancel the lease and give notice to the trustee and the Building Commission. That obviously would have very substantial adverse impacts for the county if you were to do that, so, you know, we don't want it to ever come to that. There would be a trust indenture between the Building Commission and the bond trustee, and the bond trustee would hold all the accounts for the bonds. There'd be a construction fund, there'd be a sinking fund, so that the lease payments are actually paid directly to the trustee, and then the trustee makes the payments to DTC, who then makes the payments to the bond holders. There would be a requisitioning process similar to the Ballpark project where the funds are requisitioned on a monthly basis to pay for the costs. The bond proceeds would be requisitioned to pay for the cost of the project, and there are obviously some closing costs for issuing the bonds. The Building Commission has had, they go through an ordinance process, they've had two readings, and they are set up this evening to hold a public hearing and consider their ordinance for final enactment and also a supplemental resolution. So, with these actions by the county today and the Building Commission this evening, that should complete the official actions that are necessary to authorize the bond issue and the associated conveyance of the property by the county to the Building Commission and the approval of signing the documents. So, that's a general overview. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
If I may, Tom, since it's on, it's being recorded and people can watch it, I think it would be beneficial to the public if you tell them because of the debt restrictions why we have to transfer to the Building Commission.
Sure.
A lot of people wouldn't understand that, because why in the world are you doing that?
Right, so the County Commission, under state constitutional law provisions, does not have the ability to incur or the legal ability to incur an indebtedness for state law purposes. And if the county were to directly issue the bonds, it would be considered an indebtedness of the county, which would be prohibited by state law. There is a whole process that you'd have to go through in order to incur that type of an obligation, and...
And they can't foreclose against the county.
Yes, that's right. So, the building, you know, there have been West Virginia Supreme Court cases that have determined that utilizing a Building Commission and at least between the Building Commission and the county would not be considered an indebtedness for state law purposes. Therefore, that's the structure that we're proceeding with.
Just a couple of things that we'll ask them now since you're, since you're on deck. Were we able to get the GSA approval for this transfer?
That, we are in the process of that now. We've got a contact at GSA that we are working with. We reached out to them, explained the situation. They had asked for some documentation, that the Building Commission is an entity that was created by the county, is basically a public corporation. We provided that information, so they are reviewing everything, and we are waiting for a response from them. But we've looked at the deed, and based on the deed, we don't believe that there are any restrictions on transfer, the ability of the county to make the transfer to the Building Commission. There are some provisions in there with respect to excess profits, so that if the county were to transfer the property within three years after the acquisition in 2011, December, end of November 2011, if the county were to sell the property for more than what you had paid GS, or the United States government for the property, and in addition to any improvements that you made to the property, you'd have to pay what's called excess profits then to the US government. We don't think that the transfer by the county to the Building Commission is going to involve such excess profits, but we want to get confirmation from them that that's the case. So, we've reached out and we've asked for that confirmation.
Yeah, we asked you to do that. So, what we're doing today is approving it with the understanding that that confirmation of your interpretation, and that's sufficient. That would do it, right?
Yes.
Okay, one other question. I noticed in an email you'd already addressed this, but I didn't see a response as to whether it was done, the issue of, once it transferred to the Building Commission, that the operation used of the building as established by the West Virginia Constitution and statute, all the documents makes it clear that that operation and use of that building remains with the County Commission and does not go to the Building Commission. Has that been taken care of as you previously identified?
Yes. The main agreement between the Building Commission and the county with respect to this would be the lease agreement, and the lease agreement is clear that the county would have sole control of operation and maintenance of the facility and making decisions with respect to repairs and any operational aspect, capital improvements, things like that, that the county would have sole discretion as to those items.
Those are the questions I have.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of passing this ordinance?
Or against?
Okay, we'll move to anyone opposed to this ordinance who would like to speak. Being no further comment, we, I think we move to...
Close the public hearing? I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to close the public hearing in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I would, are we ready for...
Yeah, we're ready for a motion.
I would move to, as described by our attorney, Tim Long Aiman, that we transfer, authorize the transfer of the Stagger's Building to the Building Commission for the purposes of getting the financing necessary to complete the remodeling as required by statute and in light of the fact that that transfer should not be affected by GSA, but with the caveat that there is a problem, we'll come back on that.
And approval of the ordinance?
And approval of the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. You need something, son?
Yeah, if we could sign just one of the ordinances. That way I'll have it in the file. You know, we'll get together and sign everything at the pre-closing, but between now and then, we'd be going to have to sign ordinance.
Do you need it sealed by the court?
Not necessary. Okay, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Robert Stepper.
He should probably stay, though.
You might want to stay and listen to this. Consideration from whose Commission approval to accept Moody's credit rating for, of A2 for county rating, A3 for Montague County Building Commission lease revenue bonds, series, blah, blah, blah. It's in the agenda. Okay, you want to...
I'll make a few comments if you'd like, Commissioner. We had suggested that you look into applying for a credit rating with one of the major credit rating agencies in order to lower the borrowing cost. We did that process with you all, and we have received the, the rating results from that exercise, and congratulations. We had discussed this in the work session last week. The county, Montague County, if you make a motion to approve the acceptance of the rating, would be just one of two counties in the state to have a credit rating, the other county being Berkeley County. I will also state that in Berkeley County's case, they're one notch lower than what you all would be assigned. The rating, the credit rating that the county itself, Montague County, would be assigned would be a double A2. On this scale, to give you a reference of where that is, there's a triple A, which is the sterling premium level on a rating, and because of the economy over the last several years, obviously, there aren't too many of those entities that are rated at that level, but that's the highest level. One level down is a double A1. Currently, the state of West Virginia is double A1. Montague County would be the next level, which is high grade and only two notches from the sterling grade of a triple A rating. The analyst who worked on Montague County's application noted that the strong financial position of the county is so strong and solid that but for one, one element, it would probably be rated even higher at a double A1 perhaps. And that element that takes away from the higher rating is beyond the county's control, and it's something that Mr. Aiman just referenced a minute ago, and that is that every county in the state of West Virginia has to be afforded a statutory right to not budget funds to make payments on their debt obligations. So, that was the one criteria that prevented you all from actually going even higher in this analyst's opinion. So, it's, it's a really great result, and what we would do now at this point, if you all choose to approve the rating, we will utilize that rating in marketing the Justice Center bonds, and in doing so, we will achieve significant savings compared to not using the credit rating. So, therefore, it's in the county's best interest to, to... So therefore, it's in the county's best interest to utilize the rating to achieve the lowest borrowing cost that the market will allow. One other thing I might reference, which was interesting to me, about the non-appropriation clause that every county has afforded. I spoke with several public finance attorneys from around the state, and their experience goes back over 50 years. And to their knowledge, they are not aware of a single lease revenue bond issue using a building commission structure where the county is directly obligated for the debt, such as Monongahia's case for the Justice Center bonds, that has ever defaulted. So that's a great track record, but it's also sort of a practical reminder out there that, yes, you don't actually have a debt obligation as the county, but there is very strong incentive to do as counties have done for decades in our state and make good on the debt obligation. So that was also mentioned to the analysts at Moody's, and we made sure they were aware of that, but it was still one of those situations where it's just a statutory thing and it's out of their control, and that's really the only thing that prevented you from going higher on the rating. So would you like to...
Well, I'd just like to say that I was confident very much why I wanted it to be a rated transaction. I was confident that our finances and the things we were doing was top-notch, and it's proved to be that case. And from what you're saying, to put it in layman's terms, next to the state, we're the strongest financial county in the state by this rating.
That's correct.
And a lot of it has to do because we're a county. If we were a state compared to the state, we'd probably be as good as state if not better. But we're a county, we're a lower-level government.
That's exactly right, and I think this is a model, I think the county is a model operation, and it's going to be rewarded with lower borrowing costs as a result.
And given the amount of potential savings by this credit rating, I would move that we accept the credit rating as established by Moody's for the Monongahia County.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a question before take a vote. I noticed that you've stated that the county's rating is double A2. However, here in the notes, I noticed that the rating for the building commission is double A3. Does that have any impact on the amount of interest that the county will pay on these bonds, the fact that the building commission is lower than the county?
Well, it's actually, it's rated based on the county's financial, audited financial statements. And the county itself is rated one notch higher than the bonds that will be issued because of that non-appropriation, that right of not being required to budget the funds to pay back the debt.
I understand that, but in practice, in practicality, what impact does that have on the interest rate?
Well, between a B, or, excuse me, between a double A3 and a double A2...
Yes.
I'll be happy to get back to you on that to compare, but it's not an option to market the bonds at a double A2. It'll, they'll be marketed at a double A3, and there's not going to be an option to market them at the double A2 rating for the county.
But I think we need to know and should know, because we talk double A2 all the time and have bragged about our credit rating. And in reality, this county commission's going to repay this, and we all know that. And now, this is the first time I've heard about double A3. So I really want to know if that's going to impact the credit rating and whether or not that's going to increase the cost to run this bond issue through Moody or whoever's running it through. I don't know about the other commissioners, but I certainly want to know what is this costing the county and what impact does it have that the building commission is double A3 and we were told we were double A2? And now, if there's an impact on the interest rate and the cost, I think we need to know that before we even vote on this issue. At least, that's my position.
The reason why we still have to vote on the issue is because, you know, I assume there's going to be an impact. However, we have no control because it doesn't matter. That is the rating they're going to, we have to stick with. What, I agree, though, with Mr. Bartola, that if you could get back to us on what that cost difference is. We still need to move forward because we can't stop something that is a state regulation that they've done that. But I think his question is legitimate. Just, we'd like to see what...
The interest cost difference between the two notches of rating.
Exactly.
Between a double A2 and a double A3. Happy to do that.
Right, because we've already been given a annual cost of loan payments, and if that's going to change or if that's going to increase, then we need to know that.
Okay, that's, and I'll cover that in the third, in the third item. I will show you in just a minute...
Okay.
...the savings comparison between a rated transaction, the best rating we can achieve, which is a double A3 on the bonds, compared to a non-rated transaction for 20-year and 25-year terms.
That's one thing I wanted to say. The, it's really not a question between double A2 and double A3, but I would like to know. It's good information.
Out of curiosity, sure.
It's good information to know.
Yeah.
But really, the question is, we either accept this rating and save substantial, like, what was it, $30,000, $40,000?
You will, you will save, compared to not utilizing the rating, and this is the best rating you can achieve at the current time, you will save over $1.7 million.
During the life, during the 20-year period.
During the 20-year life of the loan.
Yeah, it was like 30 or 40 or something, a year or something like that.
And the savings, correct, and the savings, the annual savings in debt service would be a savings of $85,000 per year.
I could remember.
But you will get back to us and let us know the difference between double A2 and double A3, and also exactly what the payment's going to be on the annual basis.
That's correct, but we'll have exactly what the payments will be in the pricing period that will occur next week, and we will not go forward until you all are satisfied and accept those results.
Okay, all right. I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. How about B?
B, consideration by the commission to recommend selecting a trustee, that is completely your prerogative. You all have...
We have two here.
You have two.
Welkley, right?
That's correct.
United and who?
United and West Banko.
And West Banko.
And both do a great job, and it's completely your discretion as to who you would like to select there.
Yes.
Right now, we have three TIF districts that use United and one that uses West Banko.
Do we, I just sort of like to deviate a little bit. Do we have any preference from our financial people?
Well, that's a good idea.
Kelly, any preference to which bank?
No, I mean, we don't have any problems with...
Okay.
Work with anyone. Do they have additional trustees? I mean, who, they have complete departments, don't they?
Yes, sir, they do.
And so just depends on the workload as to which individual might be working on it.
That's correct. Each has adequate resources to do a solid job.
Out of disclosure, I would point out that I bank with both West Banko and United, so it doesn't make any difference to me. I can flip.
I bank with United, so I'm making that, so it doesn't matter.
Well, I can understand. If you have enough money, you have to put it in two banks.
Yeah, I just feel badly for the one. I mean, it's almost like you flip a coin.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I feel like flipping a coin.
Because then that way, they can't say we're choosing one of them.
Let's Diane decide.
What's your recommendation, Diane?
Well, with using United Bank for three TIFs and one for West Banko, maybe I should give it to West Banko.
Make it three and two.
It's less than the load. You're not putting too much on United.
Tom, any recommendation, Tom?
Technically, because the building commission is the issuer of the bonds, it's ultimately going to be their decision as to do that, because the...
Also, we don't have to do anything?
You're recommending.
You're making a recommendation.
You're making a recommendation to them, and I think that will carry weight with them as to what they decide to do.
Well, I think Diane's logic makes sense. I meant, we have a good relationship with both of them. Let's just even that a little bit. So I, it was West Banko. I would move to recommend West Banko.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. C.
Okay, consideration of commission approval to select the 20-year term as the maximum final maturity. What drives this decision is the simple fact of why pay additional interest cost if you have sufficient net revenue to pay down the loan sooner rather than later? In looking at, did you all receive a sort of a summary sheet that looks like this? Okay.
Just tell us the difference between 20 and 25, because it's...
$3.2 million in debt service.
Right. That's all we need to know.
I have a motion.
I move, I move that we select the 20-years as the maximum term for final maturity on the loan.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
One last thing. There is, a survey was in need of being conducted on the property, and that work still needs to be completed along with a title insurance policy. Those will, those will be fully disclosed in the costs of issuance, and those are standard required documents that need to be completed before the transaction closes and settles.
Now, does the building commission do that? I thought the building commission did those, select the surveyor and the title insurance. Or do we have to do it?
When I was last up here, I had discussed with you all the need to, for the county to hire a surveyor and a title wager to handle those two things.
Yeah.
And you all voted to approve...
The hiring.
The hiring. So CTO has been engaged to do the, and they've already started, actually. Because of this compressed timeframe, we really needed to get someone started. So they've been hired, they're going to work, and they'll have it done on a timely basis. They do good work. I think their estimate for that work was about $6,500.
$6,800.
$6,800. That's a pretty, that's a pretty reasonable figure for that work. The title work, the title insurance premium is basically set by statute based on the amount of the borrowing. So that portion of it will be the bulk of the cost. I think, you know, there may be...
Is that a one-time fee?
Yeah, it's just a one-time closing. There, sometimes there's also like a title examination fee that's in addition to that, but that will, the bulk of it is the premium amount based on the borrowing. I would guess that work will probably be in the neighborhood of, probably about the same thing, $6,500 would be my rough estimate. And again, because of the timeframe...
We've already approved it.
You've already approved, I hired Stupoe and Johnson to do the title work, so we're working on that.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
A motion for what? We've already...
Oh, we did.
Twenty years ago.
Yeah. Oh, that's already been approved. Okay, anything else? Anything else?
I'll get back to you on the savings difference between the double A2 and the double A3.
Well, we want to be triple A eventually, but there's only so many things we could do. The problem with these rating companies is they do what they want to do, and we get stuck with it.
Right, and they're, they're...
They've been zapped for 10 years.
Right, yeah. It's a great recession. They were a key player in a lot of that.
We need to know what the payment is, since it involves some public funds and just good common sense. If it's going to be higher than what we have talked about, then we need to know that in terms of formulating...
If what is going to be higher?
If the payment is going to be higher. Because I recall the payment was $1,313,000 annually.
And that's what we're...
Approximately. And if it's going to be any higher than that, we need to know so we can look ahead to the budget year.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't foresee that being an issue. That $1,313,000 is based on an assumption of using the double A3 on the bonds.
Oh, it was, okay. I wasn't, I didn't, wasn't aware of that.
Okay.
Because if we were, if we were double A1, then the bonds would be a double A2?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. And they're just, they're, they have to be marketed at the notch lower simply because of the right of non-appropriation.
Right.
And that's, that, that to a rating agency is a legitimate credit risk.
Plus, it helps them make more money.
You also brought up something that, and something down the road we might want to look at, is on our webpage. We're looking for economic development, you know, and that's what we're kicking. I would love to have that rating and your expert...
You're thinking exactly as you should be. That's exactly right. Take your credit rating and...
Let's promote it because people will see, you know, what we just discussed, I think that needs to be on immediately, because when people think West Virginia, there's sometimes negative connotations. And I'd like people to think that, you know, let's look at Monongahia County and look what we're able to do, especially with this TIF district, and we're going to be going out looking for people to come. I'd love to have a Fortune 500 company say, "We now want you to come to our county." So that's something we might want to look at.
Well, that's why I want to emphasize, because I'd like to see in the paper tomorrow a nice big headline, "Highest Rating in West Virginia Given the Monongahia County." I mean, that is...
Highest rated. We can, something like that. Not exactly like that.
Well, who knows what that's going to work?
But you understand my point?
I do.
That, the, one of the things that you hadn't mentioned that we have, that we have no control, that figures into this, is the overall per capita income in the county. If our per capita income was higher, and we have no control of that, other than to promote economic development, what we've been talking about and everything, even that, that has an effect on it.
Right, and Commissioner Bloom is right on point with, I could just see, you know, a company looking to relocate, and West Virginia and Monongahia County in particular being in the hunt, maybe something like their credit rating makes the difference.
Right. Again, I think, and that says a lot, not only for the three commissioners, but that says a lot for the community.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We lost Diane.
I guess we're down to proclamation for teen dating?
Yeah.
Someone here?
Is there anyone here for the proclamation for teen dating violence awareness? No? You want to read the proclamation, Diane?
Sure. Whereas roughly 1.5 million high school boys and girls in the US admit to being intentionally hit or physically harmed in the last year by someone they are romantically involved with, and whereas teens who suffer dating abuse are subject to long-term consequences like alcoholism, eating disorders, promiscuity, thoughts of suicide, and violent behavior. Whereas there is an increased risk of unhealthy relationships for teens who have multiple sexual partners, use drugs or alcohol, don't have parental supervision, or witness violence at home or in the neighborhood. And whereas 33% of adolescents in America are victims to sexual, physical, verbal, or emotional dating abuse. Whereas the US, in the US, 25% of high school girls have been abused physically or sexually. Teen girls who are abused this way are six times more likely to become pregnant or contract a sexually transmitted infection. And whereas females between the ages of 16 and 24 are roughly three times more likely than the rest of the population to be abused by an intimate partner. Whereas eight states in the US do not consider a violent dating relationship domestic abuse. Therefore, adolescents, teens, and 20-somethings are unable to apply for a restraining order for protection from the abuser. And whereas violent behavior often begins between sixth and 12th grade, 72% of 13- and 14-year-olds are dating. And whereas 50% of young people who experience rape or physical or sexual abuse will attempt to commit suicide. And whereas a mere third of the teens who were involved in an abusive relationship confided in someone about the violence. And whereas teens who have been abused hesitate to seek help because they do not want to expose themselves or are unaware of the law surrounding domestic violence. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Montegay County Commission that the month of February be designated as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. And ask that all parents, teachers, students, and families be alerted to these statistics dated February 19, 2014.
Move for...
Second. I have a motion for approval in the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And this is a very growing disturbing situation in Montegay County.
I'm sure firsthand in the school system.
It's been going on for 50 years.
Yes.
They just got around to...
Right. Yeah. But I do know the school system is trying to deal with it and work with it. So, there is, you know... And there are agencies trying to help.
Okay, appointments to Mountain Line Transit Authority. Clement Solomon. We interviewed him.
Yes. I can move for a...
I'm going to learn a bad habit off of you. He disappeared.
I'll talk to the chair. I'll move Clement Solomon to be appointed to Mountain Line.
I'll second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Also move that Terry Cutrate...
Well, her term doesn't expire until December 31, 2016.
No, it expired 13. This is to reappoint her through...
To the 16th year.
Do we have anyone else?
No. She was a short term. She knew that it was just a couple of months, months, filling it up and expired.
Do we want to re-interview her?
You just interviewed her within the last six months.
Oh, did we? Okay.
Move that we hire... Appoint Terry Cutrate to the Mountain Line Transit Authority.
I'll second. We have a motion in the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Reports from the county commissioners. Tom?
Just two clarifications. Last week, when we discussed our proposal and we sent down to the legislature, there seemed to be some confusion in the community. And I just wanted to reiterate some clarifications. What we were discussing again is the additional funds being used above the levy rates. This was 2.7 million extra dollars that the taxpayers had already paid, had collected, and were required to send back to the legislature as some say due to the rec decision. So, the clarification is this is not any additional tax. This is funds that have already been collected and would be used to help fund repair the roads and/or snow removal. And that was what our request was. The second question that came up was there was some confusion that several people thought that because the board would need that extra money for the additional student population, what the three of us had learned when going through the step process was there is actually an allocation in the step process that the legislature gave to Montegay County Board of Education last year of over $1.1 million. Only one of six counties received additional funds to specifically pay for this increase in student population. So, again, I want to make it very clear that what the three of us did had nothing to do with the budget or would hurt in any way with additional students. This was already collected additional funds. And again, I will reiterate, if we are unable to get that 2.7 million, then what we were requesting then was that we would hope the Board of Education would lower the levy rates and remove that tax on the citizens so they don't take the $2.7 million and give it to somewhere else. Thank you.
Any comments, county commissioners? We've already went through the appointments.
Oh, you're quick on that.
Right.
All right, we don't mess around.
I say aye. Okay. No, I think Tom covered it. I would say this, which is interesting. And I know that I'm a big believer in newspapers especially, but the media. And, you know, one of the responsibilities is to give voice. You know, I would rather have, you know, 100 people say things that don't make any sense. Have the right to say things that don't make any sense than have one person denied their right of freedom of speech. So, that comes with the territory. But I find it interesting, especially from the writer, and I'm not even going to mention his name, is that he has, as I've often seen the situation like this, has a tendency to redefine what someone says and then proceeds to attack that person on something that he did not say. And that's what that whole letter was about. I mean, it was a shame that Commissioner Bloom or we even have to spend time on that because the reality is, that isn't what you said. But yet, he tore Commissioner Bartolo apart, attacked him personally, which is always questionable when you attack someone personally instead of their ideas. And I'm offended by that. And I just wanted to make my position known that I have always stood up whether... I don't care who it is. I've always stood up for people treating other people with respect. And that goes for commissioners as well as all the employees, as well as everyone in the public. Treat each other with respect. Don't attack them personally. And debate the issues all you want to. But I was just struck by that, how he took something, redefined what you said, and then attacked you personally for saying it. So, I got your back, Bill.
I appreciate it. You know, I'm reluctant to even make a comment to give that letter to the editor any credibility at all because I think it's full holes of misstatements and inaccurate statements. And to be honest with you, I was kind of surprised that the newspaper even printed it because the letter made reference to something that appeared in a newspaper, which didn't. And I didn't think that they would print something if it wasn't true, at least alleging facts. But I'll tell you, you know, I was referred to as a hoodwinker, whatever that is, or an idiot. And those are two names that I really haven't been called, to my recollection.
Well, during the current, I've been called an idiot a couple of times.
Oh, have you? But I want you to know, after 24 years in the prison system, I've been called some very choice words and didn't get offended because I considered the source. And that's what I do with this letter that was in to the editor. I just consider the source from which it came and don't really give it a whole lot of credibility. But, you know, the unfortunate part of those kinds of letters is the personal attacks don't bother me. I just wish they were truthful. But it's the miscommunications of information to the reading public that concerns me, that someone will read that and say, "Well, it was in the newspaper. It must be true." That's not always the case, particularly in letters to the editors. And the newspaper does a good job by clarifying that that it's not the opinion of the newspaper, but rather the writer. But probably spend more time on this than the letter's worth. But I will still search for the meaning of hoodwinker. And I know what an idiot is, I think.
Don't look my way, Bill.
But I... You know, we submitted a proposal forth that I think has some merit. You know, it's an unusual proposal because it doesn't impose any additional taxes on the taxpayers. And it solves a problem here locally as well as generates some jobs and helps small business. And I thought that that was a unique proposal that was endorsed by this full commission. And we're open to a better suggestion. We want our roads fixed in Montegay County. And we want to know, you know, if you don't have any other way, then let us try our way. And that's the bottom line. Other than that, that's all I have to say. Reports from elected officials. Carrie?
No, sir.
Check. For the assessor's office? Ron? Anything from Granville? Diane? Jambi?
Yes, sir.
Janet? Comments from the public? Yes, sir. Would you please stand, state your name and address?
Hello, my name is Sam Chico. I live at 271 Canyon School Road. Born and raised in Morgantown. Educated here. Fell in love here. Decided to raise my family here because I think this is the greatest country and greatest state, the greatest county we're living in. And largely from leadership from the county government. There's been a lot of discussion about the water issue, stormwater on Pumperwood Drive. And the... A lot of... I'm also... Besides my other business endeavors, I am chairman of the Mon County Health Department, as you all know where I work. We have been drawn into a situation where that private neighborhood subdivision has a water problem. And I just encourage the board to work with the health department and understand the full importance and the responsibilities of the health department. And also understand the precedent that may or may not be set by your actions. There are many subdivisions that have been built outside of the city limits that have improper stormwater situations. Are you all familiar with the storm and sanitary situation in the Crown neighborhood?
Oh, yes.
Okay, well, you know, with the health department's leadership and we helped them through a grant and install a system where that whole neighborhood basically had open sanitation, running in ditches alongside the street. And we... Now, with MUB's cooperation for $1 million, MUB is installing an entire system, sanitary, storm piping, installation, pump station, treatment plant, everything, $1 million. Much, much, much larger project and endeavor than 1,500 feet of 48-inch culvert piping that is going down to suggest to solve the issue in the Pumperwood subdivision. I am appalled at what MUB is proposing to charge and what they have already been compensated for what little they have done so far. It is absolutely disgusting. Now, I'm speaking as a citizen in Mon County. And just in case you aren't aware, I have extensive practical experience in education and groundwater hydrology, the storage and transportation of hazardous materials, sanitation, production, construction, residential, commercial, industrial levels. I've worked for Exxon, Pennzoil, DuPont Chemical, Chevron, BP, refineries, chemical plants, river terminals, pipelines, and all sorts of things. I don't know of too many people who have more experience with movement of fluids than myself. I don't know too many people who have employed more people, paid more taxes in this county over their lifetime than myself. And I feel that the county is being taken advantage of by MUB. There is no scenario where I can justify the bids that they put in. This has been an outrage for that community. They definitely need some help. But everyone's pointing the finger at what I believe, in my opinion, are their own places. I have lived in 10 different locations in this town, inside the city limits and outside the city limits. And every time I've looked for a house in my life, I've gone down in that neighborhood. And it's been well aware for my entire lifetime that that neighborhood has a water problem. And that water problem has restricted their home values. Those houses are undervalued, in my opinion, in the neighborhood of $25,000 to $50,000 per household that are affected. And the correction of that water problem will greatly increase the value of those homeowners' biggest asset, their homes, by simply remediating that problem. Being that they are a private subdivision, every private subdivision has the responsibility of dealing with their water. And MUB has exacerbated the situation by proposing an absolutely absurd quote to remediate the problem. But I also like to remind the board that MUB has a problem that they acknowledge. They have a sanitary storm line that is inadequately installed. They, by their own operations, inspect that line daily to ensure that if there is a failure, that it is remediated immediately. It needs to be repaired. It is entirely their financial obligation. It appears to me that although they put on paper that they are segregating that cost, that they're actually building it into the cost that they are putting in stormwater. That's completely hyperbole on my part. I'm just looking at it as a concern, citizen. But there is... The adversarial relationship that's going on and pointing of fingers between government agencies should not be going on. And summonses and legal excursions will not solve the problem. But the people who, you know... I mean, if you pay taxes for stormwater, you should be taken care of. If you don't pay stormwater taxes for stormwater and you pay association fees, that's who should take care of the problem. But at the Mon County Health Department, we help the neediest of the needy. We treat. And we're largely federally grant-driven. It would be illegal for us to divert money that's purposed to feed women and infants with children, take money out of that program and enrich this neighborhood. It would be improper for us to take other grant money that's dedicated for... Just physically can't do it. We are paid for services by the county commission, which we are grateful for. But to divert all those monies to these people would require this cease... You know, the only thing we could do is terminate people. And those money pay wages for people who do services. Those monies do not go... We couldn't stop buying a product. The only thing we could do is stop inspecting, stop permitting. I mean, we don't have any sort of surplus funds on the scope that is being proposed that we pay. So, as a citizen of the county and as a chair of the Mon County Health Department, I propose we do work together. But simply because people come in in this forum and scream the sky is falling and threaten you all, I mean, the first time, you ought to go out and look and see if the sky is actually falling. If you find that it's not, you come back in and later two people scream that, you know, you might want to check in. But whenever, you know... The people that are responsible for paying for their water need to pay for their water. And taking money from women and infant children or treating the neediest of the needy is not what we should be doing. And we didn't do that in Crown. And they had a horrifically larger problem than what the people of Pumperwood do. They also don't nearly have the resources that people in that neighborhood do. So, I encourage you to work amicably with us, not be adversarial. And, you know, just follow the dollars. It's pretty clear what's going on. And if I can lend any of my expertise or experience in installation of stormwater systems, I would gladly do that. But MUB needs to be helped to task.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chico.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
I would like to say one thing. I appreciate what you say. I'm not sure I'm in agreement. I think maybe some of your information is wrong. But I would like to ask the health department to come sit down and meet with us in a work session. I think there's been case law and stuff in the past where health departments and county commissions have been at odds. And the cases have always held that health departments are on their own. departments are on their own, you know, and they, they pretty much decide what to do. I don't, I don't see that we've been adversarial, so I don't know, but I don't want to get into all that right now.
Yeah, it's fine.
But, what's that?
I don't think you want to.
Well, well, because I, I don't see it. I don't know what you're talking about. I, I think you're wrong, but I don't want to get into that debate right now. What I'm saying.
Well, look, don't say, don't say, "I think I'm wrong," if you want to debate it. I mean, I, I certainly.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
I, I'm not, I'm not here to argue, sir. I'm not here to argue. The point is, is that to my knowledge, there's nothing adversarial that this commission has done. Now, my point is, you said that you wanted to sit down with us and work cooperatively. I'm saying, let's do that. That's what I'm saying. That's my point.
Well, and also for clarification, I don't know if you know, last week a meeting was held. Are we able to discuss anything? That was with the prosecutor attorney. There, there was a meeting held to discuss your concerns, and we got some more clarification that we are waiting for the actual written opinion from Marsha's office, which basically backs up many of the things that you, you are saying, okay? Until we get that, there, there seems to be a problem that basically we're trying to help some people, you want to help the people, and frustration is built in. The, what the legal action is taking against you is also about to be taken, possibly be taken against us, too. So that's why what we can and can't say, until we get that specific comments from the individuals involved, that's where we're at right now. So I think it's more of a frustration level that is steaming over, and we're trying to clear up an issue that none of us were involved with, and, but we're, because of the end result, we're, we're all dealing with. Okay?
Okay. Thank you for coming to the meeting. We need people that live in this county or involved in issues coming forth and being direct with, with their position, and, and I would echo Commissioner Callen's suggestion that we sit down and that we certainly don't want to proceed in any adversarial role. We're not in opposition. I think the health department and, and the county commission both care about the people who live and reside in this county and the conditions they live under. And I, I just, thank you for coming to the meeting. Being no further business, do I have a motion?
Second?
Have a motion for German in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.